I invite everyone to pray with us. I'm a precious heavenly Father, the Lord, thank you for this day. You've been great and blessed as you've done for us again. As we ask you, your God, your everything, everything that we say and do that honor and glorify you, made the city of Darlington better. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. I feel thankful, a pleasure to lead.
My pleasure to lead. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion for approval of minutes for August the 14th, 2024, for regular city council meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 14th, 2024 meeting.
I'll second.
Mr. Millian? Ms. Paxis? Mr. Gardner? Ms. Stiger? Ms. Carey? Thank you. Do you have a motion for approval of minutes for August the 20th, 2024, for executive session?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of our August 20th, 2024 executive session.
My second motion.
Mr. Millian? Okay. Ms. Craig? Ms. Gardner? Ms. Stiger? Ms. Carey? Do you have a motion for approval for the August 21st, 2024 executive session?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 21st, 2024 executive session.
Second.
Mr. Millian? Ms. Paxis? Mr. Gardner? Ms. Stiger? Ms. Carey? Thank you. A motion for approval for minutes for August the 26th, 2024, for special meeting for vacation.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from August 26th, 2024, for special meeting regarding the vacation.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Millian? Ms. Craig? Ms. Gardner? Ms. Stiger? Ms. Carey? Thank you. And last, a motion for approval for minutes for August the 28th, 2024, for executive session. Candidate interview for city manager.
I'll second.
Mr. Millian? Ms. Paxis? Ms. Reed? Ms. Stiger? Ms. Carey? Thank you. This is wishing to speak, and you have another five minutes. Mr. Shaw?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and to the citizens.
Good evening.
As a young person who lives in the city, I find it very disheartening that I haven't heard any councilperson, unless I'm acting or regular, come out publicly and talk about their ideals or thoughts of what to do about the young people in the city, or about the homeless, or about the elderly. And if I've been told correctly, it's going to take $60,000 more dollars for us to finish this splash pad up here. And I don't feel like that's me to be done. From what I've been told, we didn't go through the correct channels. The contractors didn't do their job, and I just feel like it shouldn't be done. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
Excuse me.
Deborah?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Deborah Jackson. I'm a resident here in the city of Darlington. Been here about eighteen, twenty years. Tonight, I want to introduce my organization to nonprofit. We had our ribbon cut on July 21st. I didn't get to see everybody's face there, so I came to show up tonight. So with this program, with this organization, we actually be serving our young people. Heard the gentleman said something about the young people. We also cater to our elderly. Our entity is a nonprofit, and we are in the need of some help tonight. We're here to make Darlington flourish, just like they have the Florence Flourish Organization. We want to help Darlington flourish as well. My background includes social work. I have a master's in gerontology, and I'm working on a doctoral degree in dermatology. We need some help. We need some money. We want to be an asset to the city. So whatever your needs are, we want to implement services to cater to those situations.
What's the name?
I'm sorry. Collaborations Together. And we're working together to serve everybody. Doesn't matter what age, or what color, what creed. We're here to help. And we want y'all to know that we are located on 107 Russell Street in the city of Darlington.
We will be a big asset to the city of Darlington. My name is Timothy Grant. I'm the chairperson.
Do you need one more?
Sure. Y'all have a beach. I'll spread the word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do a proclamation real quick.
They're going to come up to you, Mayor, so everyone can be in the photograph. This proclamation. Whereas the Castalian Club was established in 1924 and has been an integral part of the community for 100 years. And whereas the twelve charter members, Mrs. J. Warren Cogshul, Mrs. Archie Dargan, Mrs. Keith Lockwood, Miss Louise McMaster, Mrs. W. H. McCall, Mrs. J. E. Norman, Mrs. J. Lyd Nettles, Mrs. J. Lester Perkins, Mrs. J. S. Ramsey, Mrs. Charles Sly, Mrs. Henry West, and Mrs. I.T. Welling, laid the foundation for this esteemed literary club. And whereas the Castalian Club was named after Castalia, a sacred spring on Mount Parnassus in Greece, symbolizing the pursuit of knowledge and enlightenment. And whereas the club's mission to study current books and topics for the enrichment and cultural growth of its members has been steadfast throughout its history. And whereas the current members, Lynn Bernard, Linda Beckham, Janice Bethay, Patricia Boebrich, Rhonda Duke Brown, Linda Brunson, Julie Colbertson, Betty Gail Gandy, Mary Geddes, Linda Al, Sue Kilgo, Lou Purchin, Danny McClellan, Doris Memm, Ann Elizabeth Owens, Viddy Privet, Betty Privet, Joanne Robertson, Mary Seastoth, Kathy Schuler, Debbie Spinazzola, and Adelaide Stokes, with honorary members Sally Bacillus and Nyla Hood, continue to embody the spirit of learning and camaraderie within the club. Now therefore, I, James C. Boyd, on behalf of the Darlington City Council and the city of Darlington, do hereby proclaim September 3rd, 2024, Castalian Club Day. We commend the Castalian Club for a century of promoting literature, culture, and fellowship within our community, and we call upon all citizens to join us in honoring and celebrating the Castalian Club's remarkable legacy and contributions to the city of Darlington.
New business. First reading of zoning ordinance 2024-07, adoption of zoning and subdivision ordinance. Ms. Morgan?
We have Bill Eubanks here to speak for the first reading and also to do a brief presentation for that and also answer all your questions and any other questions we're hearing.
Good evening. Hope y'all are doing well.
Good.
So remember in the spring, you guys adopted the Renaissance Master Plan. And it was determined that one of the most important things to start implementing that master plan was to look at major renovations to your zoning ordinance. The recommendations that came down to y'all from Planning Commission actually ranked that as the most important thing to do. So commend y'all for letting us take on that effort. So tonight, we're going to do first reading. We actually, we met with Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago. Their recommendation to council, it was a unanimous recommendation that we repeal the existing zoning ordinance and replace it with this new zoning ordinance. So I know a lot of y'all have gotten into this pretty deeply. I've met with a lot of you one-on-one. But I'm going to kind of just walk through the ordinance very quickly. So there were several things about the ordinance, your existing ordinance, that kind of restricted your growth and kind of moved it forward as a city. So we wanted to kind of correct those. We also used this as an opportunity to combine the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations so that someone is only coming to one place for all the information that they need if they want to do a project. It was also one of our goals to make this a user-friendly document, very easy to navigate, easy to find things. So I've set this up so you can kind of flip through your document as we go, if you brought the whole ordinance with you, because you also have a copy of the handout. So if you'll flip over to page two, that's where we list the primary zoning districts. So we've made some changes there to make things just, to kind of clarify things. High density is now HD, medium density is MD, low density is LD. We sunsetted some districts that we didn't need anymore, that weren't really serving a useful purpose. And we've created a couple of new districts and combined the industrial in one, just also for simplification. And then on page three, you'll see that we kind of define what those different districts are. And then that goes through the next few pages. So on page four, plan developments. Your plan development regulations were incredibly hard to follow before. We've kind of streamlined those. We've made it make more sense. You actually don't have any plan developments right now. But should that happen, we wanted it to follow more closely with what the enabling legislation requires for PDs and also just make it easy for everyone to understand, easy to enforce, easy to implement. So flipping over to page nine.
So, Bill.
Yes, ma'am.
You said a plan developer, I mean, this is established by rezoning prior development. Can you kind of?
So a plan development, yeah. So a plan development, just so everyone understands, you have different zoning districts that are kind of your standard zoning districts, you know, the residential, commercial, industrial. So a plan development is something that's done, it's a special project, where it doesn't really fit any of the standard zoning district regulations. And this is something the state enabling legislation allows someone to do. They can change densities, they can change setbacks, they can change building heights, they can change buffers, but it's done as a very intentional thing so that when a plan development is coming through, it goes through Planning Commission and it comes to y'all at City Council. And when it's adopted, it then becomes the zoning district for those parcels. And then major amendments to it can only be done, again, by approval of City Council. So now, we actually have a really good explanation of how that process works. It was not well-defined before. But like I said, right now, there are no plan developments in the city of Darlington. Nobody has used that tool yet, mainly because it was so hard to understand. I don't know.
Bill, can you answer the whole questions that we made?
It might be better. Yeah, if you just kind of like make a note of, you know, a page number that you want to go back to a question on. All right, so flipping over to page nine, that's section 2.2, Table 1. So we have completely revamped this permitted use chart. We've made it much easier to read than before. We've organized the different land uses so that they're easier to find. They're kind of lumped together under a general heading and then more specific things. So anything that has an A next to it is an allowed use in that zoning district. Anything that has a C is a conditional use. Anything that has an S is a special exception. So you'll see those on page nine, 10, 11, 12. Flipping over to page 13 is section 2.2, Table 2, the schedule of lot requirements by district. We also simplified that, made it easier to follow, easier to find things. One of the most important things in there is that we have now added the traditional neighborhood district. And when, after y'all have adopted this, the traditional neighborhood district can be used for new developments in town that may want to have elements in there that aren't allowed under the LD, MD, and HD. But it also solves the problem of the non-conforming residential lots that you have in the city. So they will all be able to fall under the TIN, and they will be able to be developed, which you really need to help satisfy some of your affordable housing issues. Going on to page 16, this is where we break down that plan development process and go through what it takes, what's required, what the site plan requirements are, what the approval process is, what's a major amendment, what's a minor amendment. So that's laid out in much more detail. Then flipping over to page 23, Article 4, conditional uses, special exceptions, and performance standards. So we've also really clarified what's required when something is a conditional use in a zoning district. So what we mean by a conditional use is the use is allowed in a zoning district, but it's not allowed carte blanche. It's allowed as long as they meet certain conditions. So in here, we stipulate what those conditions are. So things like short-term rentals, boarding houses, mobile homes, townhomes, home occupations, bed and breakfast, things like that, that they're allowed. They just have to meet certain conditions to be allowed. Then flipping over to page 39. We've also made the signage ordinance a little bit easier to read, a little easier to follow. We've cleared up some kind of like really minor ambiguities in there. And I think it will be easier for staff to apply the signage regulations now. And then that goes through page 41, it's design criteria, temporary uses, things like that. So that's a little bit easier. Flipping over to page 47. This is where we've made some pretty huge changes from your previous zoning ordinance. So this is Article 6, buffer yards, landscaping, tree protection and preservation, open space, and outdoor lighting. So we've really made the buffer yard, the principle behind a buffer yard is to kind of screen or soften the impact of one land use against another land use. But indiscriminately applied, they really just kind of contribute to sprawl. They just take up space that's not needed. And I'm a landscape architect talking about a landscape buffer yard. You only use them when you really, really need them. So we've been very intentional on how we're applying buffer yard requirements so that it works for the benefit of everyone. So if you'll see, on page 49, we have a chart that shows what buffer yards are required when. And then moving on to page 50, we have approved tree species that are allowed in those buffer yards. And then page 51 shows how the different buffer yards work from a planning design standpoint. Then on page 52, section 6.3, we've really beefed up the non-residential landscaping requirements so that new businesses coming in, constructing, you know, commercial properties, are going to have to follow these so that the city will be more beautiful. Parking lots, things like that, will have more landscaping than were required before. Then on page 53, section 6.4, tree protection and preservation. So this is also a place where we've made some big changes. We've been working with, Mary Morgan, remind me of the?
Green Infrastructure Center.
Yes, we've been working with the Green Infrastructure Center. They've given us lots of recommendations on things that we could do to make this ordinance better. We weighed those very carefully. We adopted a lot of their recommendations. Some, we felt like were not appropriate, and we didn't include those. We felt like some of them were just kind of a bridge too far, as far as what they were asking for. So we're protecting trees. We have heritage trees that are 24 inches and up in diameter. And then we have protected trees that are 12 inches and up in diameter. And we've made it really clear to anyone coming in wanting to develop property, what they have to do as far as saving trees and to get permission to remove trees. So one of the things that we're doing is we're making a developer grade each one of the trees that's a heritage tree, 24 inches up. They grade it A through F. And that has to be done either by a certified arborist or a licensed landscape architect. And then those are shown on the plan by their grade. And, but we've also been really fair with the mitigation. We have categorized trees by their value. So, you know, a category one tree may be, you know, a live oak, a Darlington oak. Where a category B may be like a red maple. A category C may be like a hackberry. So we've stair-stepped the mitigation down from, based on the category of the tree, how valuable the tree is, and what the grade of the tree is. So as the grade goes down, the mitigation also goes down. So we're not overly penalizing a developer for removing a tree, but we're also providing incentive to them to save the very best trees and to work around them and incorporate them into their design. Let's see, moving on to page 63. General provisions and regulations. So we've met with Planning Commission several times during this process. And we heard a lot about protecting the community character of Darlington, not allowing development that would come in that would have an adverse impact on the rest of the city. And some of the ways that that can happen is if you've got an existing neighborhood and there's a vacant lot, and someone wants to build on that vacant lot, but it's flanked by existing homes. So it's matching those setbacks of the existing one, you know, so the new one kind of fits in on the street, but also matching its finished floor elevation. So we've got graphics on page 63, 64, and 65 that illustrate those principles, which just will go a long way, just kind of protecting community character as new development comes in, especially when that's inbuilt development. Going to page 79, this is where we incorporated the subdivision regulations into this document. And again, we did that so that, you know, before, there were three different documents that you would have to go to if you were wanting to do a development in the city of Darlington. Now there's one document. So it's going to be a lot easier for people to understand what the regulations are and what they need to do to meet those regulations. Then going to page 87, design standards and required improvements. So one of the things that we've done here is we've paid a lot of attention to new streets that are built as part of these developments. We want those streets to have, to be very friendly from a pedestrian standpoint. We want street trees on these streets. We basically want them to be beautiful. So go to page 89, page 90, 91, 92. You can see that we've given some guidance to developers of how those streets may be designed. We actually encourage creativity, we encourage flexibility, but we give them some kind of parameters to design to. So at least we know the street will be this good. They can make them better, but at least they'll be this good moving forward. And then lastly, if you go way back to page 101, definitions. One, in this section, it's only necessary to define things that really need a definition in the zoning ordinance. But we've taken a lot of care here to make sure that the terminology that we're using is consistent throughout the entire zoning ordinance. So if there's something that's referred to in the zoning ordinance, it's referred to in exactly the same way in the definitions so that there's no ambiguity, you know exactly what you're looking for and what you're talking about. So I've gone through this really quickly. Be glad, take any questions that you may have about the ordinance. Also, Joseph, just flip one more. So work is being done to update the zoning map. That work is not complete yet. We're also, go ahead and flip to the next one, Joseph. It's a little bit hard to see, but we know what your existing historic districts are. And then the next slide, we know what the historic districts were recommended to be through the master plan that was recently done. And then the next slide, there never was a map that showed the?
Conservation.
Yeah, the conservation district. We could not find a map. There was a conservation district that was part of your ordinance. We could not find where that was mapped. So we've also, we're also working on how, mapping that conservation district. So the zoning map will come to y'all for approval after second reading of the zoning ordinance. So once the zoning ordinance is in place, then you can vote on the new zoning map. And we're still, you know, we're working through some kind of minute details on that right now, making sure we've got everything the right way. With that, I'll take any questions before you guys vote on first reading.
Bill, I'll get through this and try to look at what notes I had made in the original, we have the council gotten, what we got tonight. One of the things that I just noticed is that we are leaving R10, R8, R6 in favor of low density, medium density, and high density. There are certain permitted uses that were available in R6 that do not appear will be available in the new residential ordinance. So I just wanted individuals to be aware of the fact that those uses will not, if we adopt this ordinance, those uses are not available.
There are some small changes. One of the changes that we've made, and I'm glad you mentioned this because it just, it made me think, you guys did not have a multifamily zoning district. I think most of your multifamily ended up being in R6. And I think it was a conditional use. We now have a multifamily district. So any apartment projects, condominium projects that come into the city will be zoned multifamily now. So that use will be, is accommodated through a very specific district.
Now, one of the things that R6 going away made me think, and I don't know how this ordinance affects it one way or the other. In today's work environment, there are certain individuals who have, in essence, home offices. They may be working remote because the company allows them to be remote. They may be working in an industry that is based on internet sales. And so they're working off of a computer, and they have little, if any, stock in trade that's there for them to use. Or they may be somebody who's doing floral arrangements in a vacant bedroom. And the way I read the ordinance as proposed, these uses may not be allowed as well.
They are allowed.
They are allowed.
Yeah, so if you go to the use chart on page 10, if you have the whole book with you. Yeah, so if you go to the use chart on page 10, if you have the whole book with you, you'll see commercial comma, home occupation. And you'll see that it is a conditional use in all of the residential districts. And then if you flip over to page, bear with me. If you flip over to page 24, section 4.6, home occupation, it tells you what the conditions are that need to be met to have that home occupation. And, and really, what that's geared towards is just making sure that that home occupation doesn't have a negative impact on the neighbors.
How long Airbnb and short-term rentals address?
So, in the use chart, that would be- Sorry, I flipped upside down. That would be accommodations, it's on page nine. Accommodation comma, short-term rental. And they are conditional uses in all of the residential districts and a conditional use in core commercial. And flipping back over page 23, section 4.2, it lays out what the requirements are for that conditional use for short-term rentals, which are slightly different than section 4.7, bed breakfast.
I usually would think of a short-term rental would be renting my house to somebody who comes for the race. Is that a short-
That would be an example. It's usually, usually when it's short-term rentals, it's, it's someone that, they, they have their, their house listed on something like Verbo or Airbnb. Where it's, that's, it's actually, it's more of a, a commercial use.
But it is permitted, you're saying, in all of the residential?
In all the residential districts and core commercial as, as conditional use. So, they have to meet these conditions under 4.2.
Oh, Bill, this was at the end when you said that, you talked about the conservers, conservation district.
Yes, the conservation overlay.
Explain that a little bit. You said, you missed it somewhere.
Yeah, so-
But there is no map of it. So, what is it?
For decades, for decades, you guys have had a conservation overlay district. But the parcels that were in that district, as far as we can tell, have never been mapped. So, if you go to page 21, that's where it tells you about the conservation overlay. So, it's primarily properties that are, that are in a floodplain. So, the way we've mapped it, you want to go back, flip back to that map. It's really, it's hard to see. But what we've done is, we've looked at, at every parcel that, that has a floodplain as part of that parcel. So, we've made them part of that overlay by the nature of them being in the floodplain.
Kind of hit me, I'm standing up here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just, just to clarify on the R6. So, we're not doing away with R6. We're just, R6 has always been called high-density residential. Just, we're not going to call it R6 anymore. We're going to call it HD, which stands for high-density, so that the, the map symbol and the, and the name match. So, R6 doesn't, doesn't go away.
But some of the uses-
Some of the uses changed slightly.
You can't-
Yeah.
You can't put a daycare center or something, you know, high-density that you could put in a R6.
So, daycare, I believe, is still allowed as a conditional use. No, we took, no, we took daycare out of residential districts and only allow it, we allow it in multifamily and the commercial district. So, if it's a commercial daycare, which is different than-
Home occupation.
Yeah.
A family daycare would be covered with that, right?
Yes.
In a home occupation.
So, they can only have one extra employee?
And have family members plus one?
Yeah.
So, the existing ones, like one with that lost street?
They would all be grandfathered in.
They would, or they would be rezoned.
R, yeah, the one off of Darkest, I don't know the name of that one.
Yeah. It could just, the simplest thing would just, to, to rezone it as a neighborhood commercial.
Okay.
I wanted to, just, just some of my understanding about not changing the character of a, a community. I'm just thinking about my street because they, most of the homes on there are old and, you know, older homes. And they were seemingly built very close to the street.
Right.
Now, now, most homes now being built further back. So, how do we handle it?
So, with this ordinance, the way that works is, so let's say that, in your neighborhood, let's say that there's a house that's 15 feet, the setback is 15 feet off the right-of-way. And then the one over here is 25 feet off the right-of-way. The one that's being built in the middle would have to fall somewhere between the 15 and the 25. So, they would have to, that would give them the wiggle room, but they would have to, to fall within those two dimensions. So, they couldn't be much further back. They couldn't be much closer. They would have to match the context of what's next to them.
Could be 15.
Could be 15. If, if one of them is 15, it could be 15.
The graphics on 63.
Yeah, that graph is, yeah, page 63, you can see that graphic.
So, so you're changing names to, they're not getting rid of. So, MD is now-
Medium density.
Yeah.
It used to be R8.
Okay, that's what-
Yeah.
So, that's now, so R8 is now-
And, yeah, RT was low-density. Now, we're just calling it L8.
It's just just for CD3. And that was part of its name before. It was just R10, low-density, R8, medium-density, R6.
And nobody knew what R6, R8, or R10 meant.
So, there was some commercial and some that was like general commercial, some was core commercial. Where, where does that fall now?
We still have those. And we also have neighborhood commercial now.
So, it's the neighborhood commercial where we were talking about before, where someone could put, you know, a little pub at the end of their yard?
Yeah, well, you know, corner grocery store or a daycare, things like that. Things that are really there to support the neighborhood. But we also, we limit the square footage. So that we also make sure that it stays within an acceptable scale of neighborhood.
What are we doing about existing convenience stores that may be in areas that are residential area?
As we go through this, they would probably be rezoned to a neighborhood commercial zone.
And if they were across the street or beside residential?
Yeah. And that's actually the purpose of neighborhood commercial is to, to be in a neighborhood, within a neighborhood.
Wouldn't be worried to be on spot zoning or anything like that?
Not in a situation like that, yes.
So, how are we going about reverting some of these, the existing neighborhoods? I understand since we're not going to do the R6 and R8 now and so forth, how are we going to, for stuff that we're reverting our current neighborhoods or services and needs referring to?
So, for a lot of the neighborhoods, it's just changing the, it's just changing the, the legend of the map. So, everything that's, everything that's R10 now will be, it's, R10 is low-density residential. So, it'll just be LD on the legend now instead of R10. So, nothing, nothing else changes.
But since there are some uses that changed with some of it under this plan, people who are currently living there-
If it's a residential use, it's a residential use. That doesn't change.
Well, if they had the daycare that we're talking about.
Those would have to be looked at individually. Some of them would just be grandfathered in. Some of them, we actually might look at, at changing it to a neighborhood commercial. If it's a, if it's a truly commercial venture, which is different than someone that just like keeps children in their home. If it's a truly commercial venture, we'd probably rezone it neighborhood commercial.
Just that was one particular, okay.
But everything that's R10 is crosswalked into low, low-density.
Yeah.
Everything that's R8 is just crosswalked into medium-density.
Yeah. So, it really is as simple as just changing the legend on the map for a lot of those.
And the changes with R6 are mainly the TN things for the lots that are too small to meet our standard. And those are the things that have been difficult to identify, partly because we don't have parcels identification on Esri and we're working with a PDF map in our old actual copies of maps. So, that's part of the difficulty. Those are taking time because they actually have to be visually identified and then mapped.
We're, we're working through it.
Looking through this, I noticed that there are some land uses that are identified in the two or three pages that are not defined in the definitions section. That could create some confusion.
So, we felt like there were, there were some uses that just did not need definition, that their, their usage is common enough, like a bank. Everybody knows what a bank is. So, we didn't include the, didn't include definition for a bank in the definition. So, there were some like that that are, in, in common usage enough that we didn't feel like that a definition needed to be included.
You've got, in your land use, you've got medical, then you've got hospital slash clinic. You also have office, medical, and dental. So, there could be some confusion between the operation of a medical clinic as well as a metal, medical or dental office. So, and you've got medical laboratories. And some facilities have laboratories inside their medical practices. So, those were some that I just thought had the potential for creating some confusions.
If you feel like there's some definitions that we need to add, we can easily do that between first and second reading.
There are also no definitions for residential age-restricted, affordable, or workforce. And I was a little concerned about residential where it says group care facility because it has a 30-patient limit. And I'm not sure that, that any of our existing, I just don't know whether anybody's checked, but my mother-in-law was in a facility and it seemed like to me there were more than 30 individuals in that facility. And if somebody wanted to place a new medical care facility, age-related, I'd think a nursing home, that it may need more than 30 patients in order for it to be economically feasible.
So, a nursing home is different than a residential group care facility?
Nursing is under medical comma, nursing home slash memory care.
Where we don't have nursing home listed in the land use.
This is under medical.
I was having to go under-
It's here under medical, nursing home section of page 11.
Okay. So, relevant in being considered a residential care facility. What would, what would Methodist Manor be? What would residential home be?
All the ways I would-
Would that be a residential?
Yeah, those would be nursing homes.
All right, well, then, then it would not be practical for somebody to build within the city limits a residential care facility if they couldn't have but 30 people.
Um, well, I, I think that medical nursing home, memory care is different than the line item you were looking at called group.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. The line I'm, I'm looking at restricts it to 30 people.
But that's not a nursing home. Nursing homes are not restricted.
Okay, but a residential care facility-
A residential care facility is-
If, if, if they Baptist home wanted to build a facility within the city limits of Darlington, don't know that they would, but-
But they could, just like-
They could, but they couldn't have more than 30 people.
But like Med, no, that's a group home. And, and the item that you're describing is medical nursing home slash memory care. Like Oak Haven, like-
What page are we on?
Like Medford on page 11.
Well, I was waiting-
And the definition is on 107.
All right, so help us understand what a residential memory care facility, so I don't butcher the name. Educate me on what that is, the, the one that he's concerned about with 30.
So, a residential group care facility would be a home in a neighborhood. It's not a, it's not a big, you know- Okay. Commercial use, for lack of a better term. A, a nursing home is, is a, it's a different animal.
So, you're calling a residential care facility just a house where you are taking care of people with medical conditions?
Yeah. As a result of age, illness, handicap, or some specialized program, required personal, required personalized supervised living arrangement or to ensure their safety and comfort. They're regulated by the state. So, this definition is, is something that really comes from the state.
So, the nursing home, which does the same, because, I mean, both of ours, Medford and Oak Haven are-
It's really a scale issue more than anything else. And also the, the type of care that they're, that they're getting. But these are, we didn't create these definitions. These are pretty standard definitions.
That's why the end of the definition for that one says the state of South Carolina shall regulate all group home facilities. That's a part of being compliant with state law.
So, the nursing home, the nursing home that are now existing in Darlington falls within these zones. We are safe. No problem.
There's no problem.
So, I got a question about, I was sitting here thinking about the, um, daycare. If someone had a daycare in their home, and I think I just read where it says, um, they can't have no display in the yard of that daycare. So, they have a daycare and they got little toys that the kids play on. How can that not be in the yard?
That's play equipment. That's not a display.
So, they can't have that in the yard?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
It says no display of products shall be visible from the street.
It's not a, it's not a product.
So, that's fine with that. They can do that.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
A product is something for sale?
So-
Yes.
So, in those jurisdictions, you mentioned that, if they're in a- if they're in a residential area and they have a daycare, the signing, the signage for that on page forty and your signage, they would be permitted only to have a building? A sign on the building and not a freestanding sign?
And isn't it required?
Even is correct.
Isn't it?
And we didn't change that from your existing code?
Isn't it required by law based on how many children you have in your daycare? You have to have a certain amount of adults to take care of these children?
Yeah, and that's, that's a DEHEC thing.
Well, here you said they can only have one additional person.
What page is that?
Page twenty-four.
Oh, back to the daycare.
It says that not more than one additional person. But the law says based on how many children, you gotta have these amount of adults taking care of these children.
That's for a home occupation.
Yeah, that's for a home occupation, not a commercial daycare. There's a, there's a difference in a home, in keeping children in your home as a home occupation and a commercial daycare. So, we limit what you can and can't do as part of keeping children in, in your home. And that needs to be a small scale. That's the reason that it's written that way. A commercial daycare is different.
Yeah, maybe so. But at the end of the day, I think this is just, um.
So, it's some, if, if.
Miss Jane has fifteen children in her house.
So, the thing is, Miss Jane won't have fifteen children in her house.
You don't know that.
That's, that's not allowed as a home occupation. It's too big. It's a scaled issue. They would have, they would have to have a commercial daycare operation, which is totally different from, you know, state regulations and, and all that.
Is it necessar, okay. Because they do, if they do.
If they are, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, thank you.
I guess, I, I, is it required that we put in this, this one additional employee? Because I, you think about a daycare who may be, they are following regulations and they have just the six or eight kids in the home. But if I have a child that I'm taking care of for someone who's autistic, and then you have two of them, you'll need an extra person maybe to help with those. If I've got a couple of newborns over here as well, then they might need more than one employee. Is it required? I mean, what type of, of issue would this create if we just took out the number of employees? If they're following the guidelines and can we not just say that they following DEHEC regulations and not put a stipulation on the number of employees? Because I may need that extra employee. You need extra hands if you're dealing with a child who may have issues.
So, if you take it away, you could have twenty employees. Where are those twenty employees gonna park? What's the impact on the neighborhood? That's why we do this, is to protect, it's a scale issue and you're protecting the integrity of the neighborhood. So, you're not having twenty people parking in the front yard. It's a scale issue. If they need that, if they need to be that big, then they need to be a commercial daycare.
I got enough revenue coming in to be one.
I mean, if you, if you just, if you're following DEHEC guidelines.
I, I'll understand the DEHEC guidelines. I get that, but I do not agree with.
DEHEC guidelines, what he's saying will allow you to have twenty people. As long as you got that many children where else. But these guidelines says, as he said, in a neighborhood, you don't want twenty employees parked everywhere and forty kids, because then it becomes a special daycare in your neighborhood.
And if you're worried about a particular daycare in a neighborhood that we already have right now, um, as long as they have an active business license, they've done everything as they legally should in the past, then they're gonna be grandfathered in. It's not gonna affect them. If the business closes and the business reopens, then it won't affect them.
It's not, it's not that. I, I'm just, when you start talking about the daycare and not having, I'm a little concerned that the only sign they could have is one on the home. But, um, just even if they're following guidelines and they can't have but six or maybe eight kids, things either six or eight, I don't recall. And, but I could see where they, if you're dealing with kids who have issues, you might need more than one person. You need, even though DEHEC tells them how many they have to have, for us to say that you can only have that one, I was just thinking that. But if we leave it, then I think that's a discussion.
On the signage thing, again, it's, it's a scale issue. Then if it's a, if it's a house in a neighborhood, then no, they don't give a freestanding sign in their yard. If it's a commercial daycare operation, yes, they can have a freestanding sign.
Does, does this sign regulation address digital signs?
Yes, it does.
How about open sign? A sign that says open, that's digital.
If it's digital, it's, it has to meet the guidelines.
Okay, so can we make a little side note in the digital that explains what open is and an open sign would, would be a little different? Because I interpret an open sign dis, differently than a digital sign. I understand both of them are LEDs, those digital, but I do not see them as the same. In the spirit of law, I would assume we would see a difference there.
We'll look at that.
The definitions for signs are on page one oh nine and one ten. And if you have some additions or edits, happy to incorporate them.
I don't want to hold up all counsel. I just.
Well, I didn't mean tonight, I, we have plenty of time.
I, yeah.
And.
Anything else? These are, go ahead. You know, these are really good questions. Thank you. I do want to, if, if you don't mind, I want to address one of the things that you said earlier, which was workforce housing. So, um, right now, the zoning ordinance does not address workforce housing in any, in any way. But I have struggled with how to define workforce housing in the city of Darlington. And I've actually had conversations with, um, staff from, um, the city of Charleston Housing Office, giving their advice on how to deal with it. Normally, when you talk about workforce housing, which is different than affordable, you're looking at eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the median household income for that area. When you're talking affordable, you're usually talking sixty percent of the median household income or lower. But the thing is, for the city of Darlington, if we look at the eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent margin, that, those are people, some, those are people that are living below the poverty line because your median household income is low. So, I think if we do get to a, a point where it's necessary to define workforce housing, we would probably define it as a hundred and twenty percent of the median household income. That seems to be the most equitable way to do it. Anything below that, you would classify as affordable here.
I was concerned about page seventy-nine, item nine, point fourteen, point five.
Now, like seventy-nine.
I think it's basically.
All right, um, my seventy-nine might not be the same as yours.
It probably isn't, but it's section nine, point fourteen, point five.
Nine, fourteen.
Point five.
Point five.
Unless it's changed.
Violations and penalties? We did not change that from your existing code. Tell me one of the things that we.
If it is there, it bothers me because it does not really define for an individual who has violated or is accused of violating it, what the penalty or what the fine is going to be.
And you said nine, fourteen, nine?
Nine, nine, point fourteen, point five. It's on my page seventy-eight.
It may intend to make a reference to something else.
So, so, if someone, this, I mean, and I'm, I'm a little bit out of my element here, but the way I read this is that if anyone violates the provisions of this ordinance, and they're found guilty of, they would be found guilty of a misdemeanor. I would think that whatever the punishment would be, would be dealt with at that time. If it were, you know, a fine or restitution or whatever. It would be done in public court.
If you could put some reference back, just so that somebody reading that has a better understanding of what their penalty provision is going to be and maybe not have to, to look at it. I just.
I don't, honestly, I don't know that I can do that because I don't know, I don't know what their violation might be. And some violations would, I would think, carry, um, a, a bigger penalty than others.
Well, that's somebody's. Back to state code.
Okay.
So, if there are references to state code.
We can do that. We can reference state code.
I just want people to know what they're facing.
Yeah. Now, I agree. I mean, for example, um, on, um, on the, um, the trees that we're protecting, we're very clear what the penalty is for removing a tree without permission. So, they have no excuse.
What happens?
If someone removes a heritage tree without permission, then the mitigation is a hundred and fifty percent of the caliper inches, regardless of the category or the grade. By the way, um, one of the things that, um, this will be a future action for y'all as city council, um, in the tree protection standards, we, um, we talk about a tree bank. So, let's say that there's a developer that's coming in and he's developing a commercial piece of property. There are a couple of trees that they have to take down to make this happen. So, they've got to mitigate, but they may not have space on their site to handle the required mitigation. You guys need to create a tree bank. That way, that, that developer then would pay the city into this tree bank. Then y'all could use that money to plant trees in parks, on streets, things like that. So, that's gonna be a, a future action for y'all, is to actually create a tree bank.
So, there's a hundred and fifty-year-old oak tree. He wants to pay for it to get, be removed. He can pay his way out?
Yes. In theory. It, um, that, that would have to go before planning commission, uh, for them to approve it or deny it. It could be appealed to the Board of Resilient Appeals. So, but in theory, they could, but they would be paying, um, a lot of mitigation, inch for inch.
What is a lot? Because I, you, you gave me an answer, but I don't, I was, I don't have an answer now.
So, as far as how much money?
Yeah.
So, that's.
Forty inches?
That's gonna, that's gonna change over time. So, the way this, the way this would work is, um, staff every year or two or three would contact, um, some nurseries and some landscape contractors. They would find out how much it costs, you know, like, how much does it cost to plant the two and a half inch tree? And so, let's say it's, what is it now? Six hundred bucks, eight hundred bucks? So, you take that and divide it by two and a half. That's how much the cost would be per inch. So, if they're having to replace a thirty-six inches, thirty-six caliper inches, um, into the tree bank, it would be thirty-six times that amount. And you'd get updated every few years just to be current and fair.
And then there's the minimum per acre as well.
Yeah, we also have the protected trees. So, there's, uh, with the protected trees, those are twelve inches and up. And there's just a requirement of how many trees per acre you're supposed to retain. And if you're gonna, if you're gonna remove trees to go beyond that limit, that also has to come to the planning commission for approval.
Another concern, this is just a general concern on behalf of the city. Section eleven point three. So, section, the C, we've got it underneath, A, B, and C.
Yep.
As I read C and twelve point three streets, it looks like if a developer comes in and develops a new subdivision and creates the streets, and the one that I'm thinking more likely about is what the school district has proposed out there where they had the old Brunson Dargan. This looks like, the way this is set up, the streets are going to become city streets. But I don't know if cities want streets because of the expense of maintenance that go with the streets. Normally, I know most cities try to get it to be either a county street or a state road. And this is drafted, as I read it, so that it becomes a city responsibility for potholes and everything else that goes along with that after the first year. If it's, you know, we go out and we inspect it and if it looks good in the, after the first year, it looks like it then becomes the city's in perpetuity.
So, um, this is something that a lot of cities are, are dealing with. The city can choose, and the, and this would be actually, you know, a negotiation with the developer on whether the streets stay in private ownership or whether y'all accept the dedication of the streets. Regardless, though, the streets would need to be built to your standards.
Yeah, but this.
So, in, in the case that, um, if, if it was determined that y'all were not gonna accept the dedication of the streets and the streets were to remain private, then the verbiage of this would just be revised.
Well, how do we tell a developer who comes in under this that we are not going to accept these streets? If they, if they filed the plan under this, and this is our ordinance, the streets are ours, are they not?
Typically, yes.
Not typically. It would be yes.
Yeah. Um, I'm working with another city right now that, um, they, they basically said they don't plan on accepting ownership of any other streets.
That might be something we want to talk about amongst ourselves and join that same crowd. Because we, we paid what we owed, owned at one point in time and I'm not only sure it will be more expensive the next time we do it.
Just if y'all, if y'all decide to do that, just make sure that the streets have to be built to your standards. Uh, because I mean, that way, you know, twenty years from now, a future city council may decide they want the streets. They want them to be publicly dedicated.
And they can accept them.
Yeah, then they can accept them.
And that serves as a special referee in a case where they didn't want them and it was a fight.
So, we've worn y'all down? Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
No, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, first reading.
Okay, last reading.
Four dash seven, adoption of zoning and subdivision ordinance.
Is this a public hearing?
In just a second.
Isn't the public hearing supposed to be held before you vote?
This is for the first reading and the hearing is typically held after the first.
I thought it was typically held before.
I'll pleasure that with first reading and ordinance, twenty-two four dash seven, adoption of zoning and subdivision ordinance.
I have a question. We'll do the public hearing after this?
Yes.
After your vote? Yes, sir.
Sheriff? Hot?
I will vote for the first hearing, but I have, I have concerns.
Yeah, I think we need a workshop.
I have concerns.
To pull this thing through.
Too many questions for this, you know? Second.
Public hearing on ordinance 24-07, adoption of zoning and subdivision ordinance. Public hearings open.
I just have a couple of things, not, not too much to keep here. At the bottom of page.
Could you state your name? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, sure. Rose Pruitt, also chairman of Historic Landmark Commission, and this, uh, is about the, actually, that part of the ordinance. And before I, before I point that out, what happens to the Darlington, South Carolina Code of Ordinances, which is different? We operate under two sets of ordinances here in Historic Landmark Commission, Chapter 50, which is part of the municipal code, and, and then, of course, this, this zone ordinance. And there's some overlap, so this is not impacting anything with the municipal code ordinance, is that correct? Does anybody know that?
Um, no, but you still will review this through, through the Historic Landmarks Commission, so that we can streamline those things, and there have been, the addition to where there will be no overlap between the two boards has been corrected, in addition to not allowing city employees to serve on a board, because those things are not allowed in state statute.
So, that's for the municipal code, which you have not had any kind of hearing on the law, you're still working on that, is that correct?
No, that, that was just in here. Article 50 has not come into play into this.
Uh, I think the part you're talking about is in Article 50. What I'm at.
Historic under Title VI as well, isn't it?
Yeah, some, yeah, some of it is, and this is pretty much, from what I saw, is pretty much a, a copy of what is already in that, that ordinance. But, at the bottom of page 20, top of page 21, what I hope is a typo, general certification of appropriateness for specific classes of use may be issued by the, and this is an extra word that is not in our original ordinance, planning commission, and if that is not a typo, then you've just split.
Oh, it is a typo.
Okay.
It, it just should say commission, all this section is about historic landmarks.
Right.
That is an error.
Okay.
Split now. Is that the, at the very bottom, last word, or you have?
Page 20.
Oh, okay. It should just read, may be issued by the planning commission, not the planning commission.
You saying, take that out?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
Consider it done.
And, and just a clarification about the tree ordinances, those are for development, new developments, right? This is not something that's being applied to the entire existing residential area.
It would apply to residential properties.
So, now, it would be mandatory for homeowners to, that want to remove a tree to go through all this?
If it's a tree that's 24 inches deviation up, yes.
I'm not sure that all the homeowners in Darlington are going to be real fond of that part around.
Take your place.
No.
You're right.
Yeah, so, if you're not fond of that part, you need to talk to these folks. It, it looks like it could read either way, the way it's written, it could either be for new development, or for, or for the entire city, so, there's some ambiguity there, and if it isn't, can it be?
What position is that, or?
That's in the, that's in the.
Do you know what you headed, Mark, or not?
53. It just goes into the heritage tree, protection tree, that whole thing, and it's just not clear, the way it's written, whether or not that applies to new development only, or the entire. Which I think would be quite a bit invasive, most homeowners would consider that quite invasive. And I'm still not clear about your answer to the article 50, you say it's already been rewritten, or it's just eliminated? That's from municipal, not from this.
That's correct, it's not been touched.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My question is, is Mr. Upland, is anyone going to give the public a presentation like was given to council, of the public hearing, so that we have an understanding? Unfortunately, we don't have copies of anything, and just a matter of protocol, it might be worth considering, having a public hearing before you take a vote, at least you'll be able to get some of your constituents' comments, and is anybody going to present this to the public, so that we have an understanding? Most public hearings are not just that, okay, anybody have any comments, when nothing's been presented to us, like it's been presented to council. It's very unorthodox, and especially when these ordinance are going to affect our communities and our lives, so, I think that's something, perhaps, that will be done here tonight, you know, I don't know. Even a handout, to say, here's the pros and cons, here's what's being changed, here's the things that are going to affect us. I don't know, I think I heard some of the zoning classifications are going to be changed. What are they? I mean, we have nothing, and then you ask us to comment, literally nothing. So, I would ask the council to consider how we handle our public hearings, so that you really, so that the public really has an opportunity to participate as we shoot in public hearings, because it, it could be better, is this something I can take?
I'll say, I think that the public got the information from here, but I kind of agree with you on not being able to voice your opinions before we vote. I think that's fair. I don't know which way this ordinance should be, as far as items, but it's something for us to consider our next workshop.
Oh, yeah. I totally disagree that we got the information, because I couldn't even see the stuff on the screen up there, it was so small, and I wear glasses.
Just, just so the public knows, the zoning and subdivision ordinance is on our website.
May I offer that, for the, after the next planning commission that evening, perhaps a citywide workshop would be an option?
My, my comment is, I really think this should be in a workshop, as opposed to in a city council meeting, because many of the councilmen who, who had an opportunity to read this, I haven't had an opportunity to go onto the website and read it. It would have been good to have something to hand us, I mean, everybody's not going to have accessibility to go onto the website, and time enough to, before a public hearing, to participate in it, so, that would be very helpful.
And I think we're in concurrence, if we go have a council workshop, where we discuss and meet, that would be open to the public, and it may be, and we don't, we have not seen proposed zoning maps at this point in time either, so, we're not going to do anything until we've seen zoning maps, and have worked through those, to see how all this fits together. So, there will be, there will be some opportunities before council acts to either accept it as drafted, or say, we'll take this part, but not that part.
Councilman Wallace, I think that's very wise, because this takes a big chunk of the council's meeting, and each of you have very valid concerns, from what I could hear, right? And I think, especially when you're dealing with some of the tree, a lot of things, I think you could want to hear some of the public's comments as well.
And I do agree, I feel like we do need to present something, when we have a public hearing, it should be something presented to the public, so they can understand what we're doing, what we're talking about, and they should be getting something in hard comments, and I do agree with that.
And normally minutes are taken during these public hearings, and the public's concerns are documented, and at some point are addressed, and none of that, none of that has been happening, really, I mean, at one point in time, the city used to have these types of pub, used to have what I call real public hearings, but for the last couple of years, we have not.
I don't think public hearings should be in a regular council meeting, I think they should be separate, and don't think we should be in a regular council.
So, we all get more information out, but for purposes of going through the rest of the agenda, I would propose, or I would make a motion that we close the public hearing and go on to something else, and come back in the future and give citizens an opportunity to address things on the record, because right now, they don't know what they're addressing.
This gentleman has tentative.
Okay, fine.
The public hearing is, is like, I was just telling my wife, how could you vote on something that the public didn't speak on? We, like, we sitting here, we listening to what y'all saying, but we're kind of confused of what's going on, the terminology and everything, like, we couldn't see the screen, and then y'all say, let's take a vote. No, I don't think a vote should be taken, because the public hasn't been heard from, because the public has an opinion also.
All, all we have done tonight is to have approval of a first reading and name only, we have not approved anything in substance, and we're not going to approve anything in substance until we meet back together again at a meeting where it would be open to the public, and questions that we have, maybe questions that you would have as well. So, this is not stopping, my suggestion is just that we, at this particular point in time, close tonight's public hearing, so that we can address other matters on the agenda.
And in the spirit of transparency, there were several of us, the council members, who were very uncomfortable with not having the same thing, of being able to have that, the information to the public, once we saw that the public hearing was there. So, we're in agreeance, and that is being proposed as to how that is done, one being, our work sessioned at its public, so that we can get with all the information presented to you. And I think one of the things about the presentation was to be able to give the public a chance to see, it was not probably done in the order that it should have been, but that was the spirit.
Might I request that you pick a date for the public hearing?
We will, we do have to.
We're not going to pick it right now, but we will.
It has to be after we have the workshop.
Yes.
Well, that's what I meant, for your workshop, would you like to pick a day?
Yes, ma'am.
That would be the plan ahead?
I don't mean to interrupt you, but what I'm saying is, I don't have my calendar here in front of me, and so, I'm not going to pick a day without looking at my calendar, and so, council will email, and then we'll set a date, and we'll, of course, let y'all know.
Yeah, and make it big public.
So, when are citizens supposed to receive this information, if they can't go into the city website and find it?
So, our route, you can always come up to City Hall, if you'd like, and you can get it anytime you'd like, it's published two weeks beforehand, or you can go on the city website.
And another suggestion, just have, just, you could have, like, a one or two pages with, here's the key changes, that just kind of give us an understanding. Here's what's existing, here's what's changing, I mean, at a minimum, that tells us a lot, and you can get a lot of questions and comments, just on the significant changes, and that's not a lot, too, and normally, that's provided at a public hearing, but we have nothing to comment on here.
Any other citizen comments? I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Craven? Thank you. Need business approval of demolition, demolition contract.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
So, I put it on, but that's for you all today, sorry, it wouldn't.
Oh, yeah, that's all.
We've been out for the demolition project, yours is up there, right, right side.
Is there not a law that says that we have to, like, if we demolish, demolish one house on one side of town, we have to go to the other side of town and do it? I thought there was some kind of law, or is that just?
Maybe the same there.
Right, so, people have a city block.
But they can all be in the same ward?
They can be in the same ward, they just try to keep them off of the same city block.
You could not have that.
Well, I'm just saying, here's a law, people using that, I guess, is not, is not coming tonight, but let's make sure that we're doing it throughout the community, and not just all in one. Even if it's different neighborhoods, you're still within a quarter mile of each other?
Well, they're close in proximity, only because of many of the houses that are.
Oh, I totally understand.
Are in, you know, so, but I do keep them, you know.
They're close, they're too close for my comfort. Let me just say it that way, because my understanding of the spirit of the law is, is that we're supposed to hopscotch around the community?
And we do hopscotch around the community, but we move from one side to the other side, north side to the south side, so I do, I do hopscotch around.
Usually.
When the houses are, when the houses are available.
And that may be the case, and that may be the case, I just wanted to bring it to attention, because I just did a Google map search, and they all look mighty close to each other.
Well, and some of that is because.
Where are your materials?
No, well, not just that, some of them, I had to change what was being bid on, because many of the properties here get sold at tax sale, so now I have to start the process all over, and we can, you know, condemn it again, wait the 30 days, you know, and then, and then it gets, the previous owners that lost it at tax sale, they redeem it, and so now it goes back into the other person's name, so I have to go back and, and, you know, re-condemn it again, and so, you know, it's just jumping back and forth, and getting it at the exact time, so that, you know, we can get it down, because some of them have been on for a minute.
Of course.
So, one hundred, you thought it was close?
Churchill and we are all within.
I don't know, where's Churchill?
Churchill's over here by the, on Pearl Street, where the gas station is, right when you cross the, the railroad tracks, is Calhoun Street, and then, when you go down Calhoun Street, then it turns into Churchill, Churchill goes all the way back out, back out to, and then, these three of those is on the other side, over here, that runs between Edwards and South Argus Street. Well, so, we put a notice to bid, in the news and press, we received three bids, ranging between 23,4 and 29,000, and some just, we find out from council.
Oh, they're pretty sure bonded to.
They are all, they're all, they all have their general liability insurance bonded to, and they have submitted a certificate of insurance.
What happened to the Coates Street?
So, I only chose three properties for them to bid on, and if you look at the notice to bid, it says that if this, they will be awarded the entire fiscal year, the Coates Street's on the demolition list, that's the list that we're working on, I didn't ask them to bid every house, I asked them to bid three.
So, how long have these?
And then whoever, whoever is awarded that will get, whatever's on the demolition list, even whatever gets added to the demolition list, through June 30th, 2025.
So, how long have these three properties been on the demolition list?
These three properties have been on the demolition list, let's see. And then when you go down Calhoun Street, then it turns into Churchill. Churchill goes all the way back out, back out to. And then Lee Street, those on the other side, over here, it runs between Edwards and South Ark Street. Well, so we could have noticed to bid. In the news and press, we received three bids, ranging between twenty-three, four and, um, twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand. And some just, we'll find out from council.
Oh, they just pretty sure bonded to.
They are all, they're all, they all have their general liability insurance bonded to. And they have submitted a certificate of insurance.
What happened to the Code Street?
So I only chose three properties for them to bid on. And if you look at the notice to bid, it says that if this, they will be awarded the entire fiscal year. The Code Streets on the demolition list, that's the list that we're working on. I didn't ask them to bid every house, I asked them to bid three. And then whoever, whoever is awarded that will get, whatever's on the demolition list, even whatever gets added to the demolition list through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
So how long have these three properties been on the demolition list?
Um, these three properties have been on the demolition list, let's see. Churchill has been on the demolition list for a year. Lee Street has been on the demolition for two years, and Milling Street was added last year.
So they get approved tonight, they get the rest of our budget? For demolition?
They get the budget.
So why wouldn't I just low bid tonight and make it up in the rest of the year? Like, if I was one of these people?
Well, I'm only gonna be able to do what's in my budget.
Did you understand my point?
I do, well, I do understand the point, except that this.
What is the total budget?
Um, I think it's twenty.
What he's asking is, is one of these contractors gets the bid, and he's gonna get the bid for, he might not have enough money for one more house, but he gets, he takes it up on the next house. Is it not, but we bid it out again?
No, so, so no. So what happens is, whatever's not on the list before, they don't, I just don't tell them, you know, go to, you know, one, two, three, act away, and just go do it, and then, you know, it comes back. It has to be, you know, I go through and figure out what the dollar per square foot is that they're charging me, and it has to be within that window. So if they come back, and, you know, today they said six thousand dollars for this house and one that's a comparable square footage, and, you know, ease to get to and all of those different factors, and they come back and tell me twelve thousand dollars, no, you don't get to do it. They have to provide an estimate before they tear down anything that, that comes through. They don't, it's just carte blanche. If they come back and they say it's too much, then I'm gonna let them know. Then we'll go to another house, or, you know, we'll have to talk to council and, and figure something else out. But they don't get to just charge whatever they want, and then we're just gonna eat it because that's what it is. But having, asking what the budget is, I believe it's twenty-five thousand dollars this year.
Is there something in the bid proposal that tells them that they have to stay within your guidelines?
Um. I believe it does, but, I believe it does, but I have it in my office.
Because that can sometimes be a problem. They may think, ah, I can lowball this one because I can make it up on the next street.
But they didn't, they haven't lowballed it. If you look at what we've paid for demolition over the last ten year or eight years, it is in keeping with what demolition companies have charged us in the last eight years at least.
So why does, what is it about Churchill Street that makes it so much expensive than the other two?
It's a bigger house.
It's almost double the other two.
Um, it's a, it's a bigger house. The one on Lee Street is halfway falling down already. Um, the one on Milling Street's a very small house, so it's, um, in keeping with square footage. On Churchill Street, it's gonna be difficult for them to get their equipment in more so than, than Milling and Lee Street. Lee Street is, you know, it's easy to get in and out of there. Churchill, you have to, it's a very skinny street on Calhoun Street, you have to go down, it's ninety-degree angle, and that is a one-way street almost on Churchill Street. Um, and then the grade of that property, it's a little more downhill because that's getting closer to floodplain area. So there's a definite grade difference. So it's gonna be more difficult to get that one down, it's a larger house.
And they're required to have.
They have to completely demo it, down to the foundation, they have to clean it, and they have to level it out.
Ready for.
I'm surprised.
Tractor, or a Mecca, whatever, not Mecca, but. Push all the code.
There's just so much stuff on Milling Street, I'm surprised it's that low for good. I mean, the houses.
Our fiscal budget is twenty-five, so I don't have anything to worry about.
Well, that's all we've got, and they will do these three houses, that's that right there. So, sorry, my buddy won't get it, but.
We can get for twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, oh, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, just these three. So we're going away, I remember we had a list with, there was something on South Milling Street and this other stuff. South Bay Street is gonna be exponentially lower than this on current budget. Okay, so none of, they're like seven on that before, so none of the others are going. And I already know, um, one of these is not really taken down. What we spoke about just a second ago, it was sold at tax sale, so I have to pick another house. It is a small house, and it should be in keeping with the prices that it has. So I already know it's not gonna be this one.
And when.
Which house was sold with the tax?
Um, Churchill's.
So, uh, Tallulah and Circus, they all four live down there corner.
Well, I need you to put a house on Main Street that we talked about two years ago.
Which one?
That house was two years ago.
So are we ready? Um, I saw, I'm assuming that we'll go with the lowest bidder here.
We have those.
They're not speaking to hell, which, the contractor can come back and quote the Code Street.
Yes, he's gonna be back.
Say it again.
The, the house that's being taken off, it's already been filled in by a house that's currently on our demolition list.
Oh. So are we ready? Are we looking at the lowest bidder since that's under our budget? Is that what we?
Is that what you suggested, sir?
Is that what you suggested? And in that case, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, the lowest bid here of Goldman Services of twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars for the demolition of these three homes of the, of what's, of the three homes outlined in this contract.
Our second. Mr. Millen? Mr. Craig? Thank you. Figures, non-questions period.
Thank you. It is chilly.
I just said that.
Uh, classes for Fahrenheit of replacement computer.
It's just bringing us to prices.
Okay.
Thank you.
Missing several hydrants and several need repair. Pack into the, thirteen total. And since pass comes in with those thirteen, we've prepared three. And the registries are missing, or need investigation, find out what size main they're on, what size leg they have. And Mr. White just passed out quotes for, the three quotes for, for twelve hydrants. And the leg to be, for replacement.
All right. Wait a minute.
It's the ones that say when the others are. That's all.
So you're saying there's a total of twelve hydrants still not operating?
There's eleven that aren't operational. Yeah, there's thirteen and fix three. Oh, there's ten, there's ten.
Four missing.
Yep.
There's four missing and six, six not working?
Correct. The one on Darden Street, the stem's broken on that one. But we're gonna have to cut the street up in order to look for a valve, which may or may not be on.
So it is a water issue?
It's a water issue?
It's a water issue, but these fire hydrants are not working?
Some of them are, yes, I am. It's not just a simple, just go in and replace, and, you know, just go in and dig it up and replace the hydrant. These, um, it needs to be on a six-inch main. And, and like the one on, at South of Pearl, was on, it's on a six-inch main, but it's got a four-inch leg. Well, the new laws require it to have a six-inch leg and a six-inch main. And by leg, I mean, the mains here, the little line that runs over to the two hydrant, that's, that's the leg. So that particular hydrant had a four-inch leg. So a six-inch tap would have to be made in order to replace that hydrant, which the water department does not have the equipment to do, to make a six-inch tap. You can make up to a two-inch tap, we can't make a six-inch tap. So that would have to be contracted out.
Is that insertion tool that we have talked about purchasing, be what we need to do that?
It's totally different.
Totally different?
A tapping, a tapping machine, a hot tapping machine, an insertion tool, or just apples and oranges.
So we can't put it out with the, so the machine that we need to put valves on over the city?
Mm-hmm.
Totally different machine?
Totally different machine. That, that machine will put a valve in an existing line, but it won't, like, make a T off of an existing line.
Okay, just like a cover.
You've given us three pages.
Um, the last two pages are, are something I'll discuss when I come back up.
Marking these are what you told them about now, or is the title?
The three are stapled together, are what I'm talking about. Yes, sir.
Are you asking for this tonight?
So the equipment is bringing us to us.
Um, uh.
This isn't just, you're just doing your job.
Yeah, this is, um, I'm not asking for this amount, um, because I can't find it in the water department's budget for, for this amount. I'm, I'm not sure where the funds would come from for these twelve hydrants, but, um.
You just bring us the, the amount?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's all I'm doing, is just bringing you how much that costs.
So we can study this, okay, very good.
When we talk, it's certain, like, it's cheaper to buy the hydrants than a dozen or twelve. They'll get a better cut rate for them. And right now, we have ten. We still have a little over a hundred hydrants left. Ordering the twelve will give you two extra in case we find something on down the road and have to go back. But it is cheaper to order them in a dozen, correct?
Correct.
That is why we did the twelve, we thought of twelve.
And this is the cost of the hydrants, what's the associated cost, but.
That's gonna be there.
Some, some of these we can install. Some of them we can, but some of them we can't. Like, like I was just saying, the, the six-inch tap, we're not capable of, we don't have the equipment or the training to do that. I'm not saying that we couldn't do it, couldn't learn how to do it, but.
How many can you currently install?
I think we can do, um, three. We can do three of, of the, the ten that remain. The ones that are missing, that we are, that we know what the size of the leg is, we know there's a valve there. And all we have to do is just have them come off and put a leg in.
So we fixed three fifty thousand dollars, and we got seven that you.
Seven that you would need to have installed. Yes, sir, you have to pay, pay someone else to come in and install it.
So in order for y'all to be qualified, and the key word is qualified.
Yes, ma'am.
To be able to install these hydrants, what is the requirement?
Uh, there's not a certification or anything that, that you have to have to put hydrants in. Quali, or qualified and suited, I guess, um. We would have to have more equipment to do it ourselves, and some training on, on running that equipment, on, on a six-inch hot tap machine. For us to do all of these, all of these ourselves.
That's supposed to prevent you.
So that machine.
Step in.
Yes, sir.
So that machine can't be rented?
I'm not sure.
So from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, Shugart is supposed to have all these certifications. So seem to me, if he's certified with all these certifications, he ought to be capable of putting in a light hydrant. I'm not asking just me for it, I'm just making a statement. Because I spoke with Florence, I spoke with Horaceville, I spoke with Marion. I mean, everybody around us does their own work with hydrants, um, install them and, and themselves. They don't have to hire somebody to do work to put in a hydrant. So seem to me, for somebody to be paying over a hundred thousand dollars a year, ought to be able to put a hydrant in. Come on now.
They can put a hydrant in, but they can't change the six-inch tap line.
Oh, that means you can't put it in?
I'm sure he thought what you're doing, he has the equipment.
The question is, can the equipment be rented? If the equipment can be rented, then he should be able to put it in.
Fair enough.
That's what we paying him to do.
Fair enough.
He claims he got all these certifications, then show me. Earn your money.
Sir, would you like to say?
So please check into that for me.
I can, I can check on that, and, um, the contract to be from the six-inch tap is fifteen hundred dollars per, per tap, per six-inch tap.
City manager, I would appreciate our council meeting that Shugart show up so we can ask questions.
All right, do you want to purchase these, or you'll wait, or?
We can wait and find out. If we can get this piece of equipment, this is a lot of money, yes. If we can, that would definitely save us some, a great deal of funds before we commit. So I think we need to take a listen.
Well, if you purchase these, you don't have to purchase them at night, but when you purchase them, you're personal. Where the week of the day is, well, because you already got the price to be ready to get them. Jonathan, you're also saying that this, if I understood you correctly, you don't see in your budget where this fifty-something thousand dollars is a part of your budget?
No, sir. No, sir.
So on.
Fifty thousand, he's just saying this is worth the cost, but they don't have anything in the water and sewer department budget to cover the fifty thousand, we got to find the fifty thousand somewhere else.
Okay, so.
Or either we got to tell them, you're gonna have to reallocate your budget, such and such, for such and such.
So on line item, on the, on the water department budget. The line item, I think I said it out. On their line item, there is a line item on their budget, the water department shares hydrants. And there's eighty-five thousand dollars sitting on that line.
I don't, I only report what he told me.
Well, I'll report this on the line.
That's not only for.
There's eighty-five thousand.
That's not.
Hydrants right now is priority one.
Yes, ma'am.
What is, what is eighty-five thousand for a quarter?
I don't have a bunch of.
It's for two-inch.
It is on that.
It's for a two-inch hydrant type.
It says hydrants, it doesn't specify two-inch, three-inch, or inch.
City manager's got.
May I speak, please?
Yes, please.
There is some money in the water and sewer capital fund that can be used to purchase these hydrants. There's three hundred and sixty-one thousand, three fifty-nine that's in the general fund. And then I also have some money in, in the state fund, which is like three hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Can we make this an agenda item in our next workshop?
Well, I mean, based on what he's saying.
I mean, we can vote, and I'm just gonna vote, uh.
I mean, based on what he's saying, you're saying you need to go ahead and purchase the hydrants, which I understand, because hydrants is priority one, you need to get this, this moving.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm, I'm in agreeance with purchasing the hydrants, because we need. I'm not in agreeance with hiring somebody to put them in if we can rent the equipment and they can put them, and the water department can put them in. But we need to order by them, because we need them. I agree with that.
We can go ahead and get started putting in the ones that we, that we're capable of putting in, you know, right now. We can go ahead and get started on that, essentially, hydrants are good.
So we can go ahead and purchase, we need to purchase twelve hydrants.
It looks like Ferguson's got the fiscal license on them.
You want us to, the lowest bid here, is that what you're looking at?
Can I hear from Chief Campbell, just make certain that what we have here from this Ferguson Wardwood, this is the type of hydrant that you need, and it would be sufficient for those that need to be replaced in any.
For a hydrant, okay, there's, just like automobiles, there's fifty thousand different designers out there, makes and models.
Yeah.
What we require is the main size to be correct, and then we have two small outports and one little first timer. We really don't have, I don't care if it's a Evon, an Evian, a Aquaphina, as long as it'll do our job and the cost is reasonable, that's, I don't, it's not my, no, ma'am, I don't want shop.
Have you seen, have you seen these bids and know if this is the type of hydrant, I guess is what I'm asking? Because you said that they're different makes and models. Do, I just want to make certain that what is here, you have been ready to and know that this is gonna suit you, because there's no need to order something.
These are the, uh, American darlings. We have some American darlings in town. Uh, let me educate you a little bit. You got some that look kind of round, trying to traditional, then you got the one up here by the AT&T building that's kind of square looking. Those are American darlings also. There's two or three different types. What matters here is, these American darlings, the ones that are gone, they should bolt back up on those ones. Um, you cannot put a four on mercury chassis. The hardest part he's gonna have to figure out is which ones were the American darlings. Uh, if they're missing from that spot, he could take and bolt them right on. It won't be too hard in that space. Probably get into, and I'm not key on the prices and stuff because it's lowering my, my, my scope here, um, the water lines like he says. Now the hydrants, once they get taken out of service, the four inch lines, which we have a ton of them around town, eventually let the door up and put a six inch line in. Uh, and they know this. Uh, the thing has been going south for a long time, but, yeah. Hydrant type, as long as it fits and bolts up and the main is correct.
Where do you know if it fits and bolts up?
I will not know until I see what's hy- we have on our roster at least seven different types of hydrants done, at least seven. The one that was taken out north Main Street when Mr. Kinsley was here, I don't know what type that was. So I don't know if it's an American Darley, a Predator, a, a Ferguson, a...
Is there some way to confirm what we got before we just...
You have to look at the valves and try to figure that out. That's gonna be hard.
They could look at the valve to see if these can be bolted on?
Yes, yes, yeah.
I think I can move it.
Kinda, cause they're, they're all very similar, but then they're unique in their own way.
If we get one and it doesn't bolt on, can you trade it for one that does bolt on, or are we gonna go buy another one?
Uh, I haven't checked on that.
Let me ask you. Yep, liefer. You understand that all that talk y'all do, that, that does allow... I don't comprehend that. I'm looking at that we are spending fifty-seven thousand dollars for twelve hydrant. Why are we talking bolts and it on? I would think that we getting a hydrant, that's a nu- that's a new hydrant, and the other one, you ain't got to match it up to anything, you use that.
Exactly.
Okay. That's, that's, that's all I wanna... Okay.
In front of Leos, if you walk over there, the hydrant comp was taken off the rest of the city there, so you're just gonna make it bolt.
So if they buy another American...
But that's not, we bought the tops.
With the base that's there, it shouldn't have to be much workable at all. Some of the other bases are so old, and, and he finds out when he goes, the old bases are oldish.
I was feeling more comfortable, I guess, than you. I don't know. You need to look at that.
We've talked about hydrants in the past. Um, twenty-three thousand dollars on a hydrant is not expensive.
So if it's the size you need?
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever it is, gotta be six inches now. They don't do hydrants on four inch legs anymore. You're not gonna get those. They're not gonna pass hydrants under when it comes in. But he's kind of in a spot where he's gotta get, once he does the work, he's gotta bring up the code. It's like when somebody comes in front of me and this shit, like something's wrong, at that point, a new code's take effect. You gotta put it back, and the new code's back.
I don't want us to spend this account on fifty-two K if there's a potentially a line that we can go in to get all this stuff done. So, that's my worry.
But, she, she said we got that budget. It's in the budget.
Um, it's, it's not in the budget, and we do have three hundred and sixty-one in the general, um, but we only have three sixty-one in the general, so...
But under that line item, this, the eighty-five thousand is in, and it's in... But you don't see that?
Oh, I do. I just see a lot of things we could do right now.
Oh, no, I mean, so just test the board.
Fifty-two K, even if it's in the general, if I could spend fifty-two K on a match for a grant, if that makes sense.
At this point in town, who told you about hydrants?
That's not for me. I'm not, our former grants are for five, fifty-seven. Yeah. When you do grants, you're taking, when you do grants, you're standing a little up there.
Without even knowing it's twelve again.
And they wait six, eight months.
So we were, we, we put it in the last time.
They just said, they, they telling me that it's a brand new thing. This is a priority. We discussed it a month ago. How many more you gonna talk about the same thing before somebody's house burned down?
Thank you.
And you get sued because there is no dog on water?
That's right.
Common sense. Jesus Christ, you threw away seven hundred. On one fifty-one, you had no problem. Seven hundred thousand, and now you're talking about fifty-two for somebody's life? You must be joking. You got to be joking.
I've had two friends...
That house on Doggard Street burned down. If that guy had any common sense, he would've sued to see that dog.
I would've shown.
If he had any sense. Cause his house burnt to the ground, cause no water.
Can I talk? I've lost a best friend of mine through a house fire less than a hundred, two hundred yards from here, and his father burned up in the house, and six dogs. Don't talk about me, to me about life. I'm not trying to harm anybody's life. I'm just trying to make sure we have the dollar for the next emergency.
We, this is an emergency here now. We ain't worried about tomorrow. We worried about what's gonna happen to people now.
We're allowed to have differences of opinions, ma'am.
You do, but I think we need to go ahead and buy the hydrants, and instead of installing every month, to next month, and next month, and next month. Before somebody's house burned down, and we can't put it out, and now that's another lawsuit. We got twenty-five lawsuits now. How many more you want? How many more you want?
For the record, uh, a lot of this comments are false.
Which one was false? The house on Doggard Street burned down?
You don't have twenty-five lawsuits.
Okay, well, look at the list.
All right, uh, do we have a motion to approve, um, the purchase of these, or do you want to wait?
I'd like to know what several different li- types we have before we make the first, cause I like to know if there's a grant and we can... Can we please ask the gallery to not comment in the middle of my talking, please?
Oh, no.
Um, but no, I would like...
Y'all guys can stay quiet.
I make a motion that we purchased a fire hydrant from Ferguson for fifty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars for these hydrants. And if y'all don't wanna buy them, fine, so just so to know, y'all don't care about their lives. I said...
Jonathan, I expressed a slight concern that Nicky had. Make sure that if for some reason we buy a hydrant and it does not fit to where we need to put it, that we can replace it with one that does fit. I just wanna be sure that...
We have a good relationship with Ferguson.
Yeah, I just wanna be sure that we're, we're getting what we need to be getting while we're getting, everybody wants us to have fire hydrants. Um, just as long as we're getting the ones that, as she pointed out, will fit what we got at this...
If I can keep from digging something up, I, I would definitely do what it takes to not do that. And if, and if swapping out a hydrant will keep you from digging road up.
Don't they have, and there are possible template or whatever else that you could put in, place that would make it fit, I think you said?
Uh, the level up?
If one doesn't fit, if it's one, if one's you're getting, if it was different from the other six, that you could put a, uh, what do you call it?
Okay, adapter or what?
Adapter.
They're, they're all the same height, but the, the fours and all, all the hydrants are all...
So some say for it being in the border?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, no, no, not really. It's like from American Darling to a border, whatever, but, no. Because that would, that would make the hydrant taller than eighteen inches.
I'm voting in favor as long as we don't have...
There's a motion. Do you carry the motion, please?
As long as we don't have... We're, we're talking, yes. As long as we don't have four of them sitting on a shelf that we can use.
I'll, I'll get as many of them down as, as, as we can.
There's a motion in the second.
Who made the second?
One in the select...
Mr. Millian? Mr. McCrayton? Mr. Gordon?
I think you already voted. I'm gonna have to vote no. I would just like for us to be more educated before we go down, so now...
Mr. Stevens? I don't think we can give him place or, or where he is. All right.
I see y'all in it.
First of all, for new housing development, Daniel Street, Reed, Richard Cook.
I'll let you up.
Did you hear him stand up here?
No, I'm good.
Council members, Mr. Mayor?
Um, go ahead and pass these out. Here you are. So, uh, the room you discussed tonight is near mainly Daniel Street? Pass the, the three, okay, pocket step forward. Um, so, it was both my thoughts of that, if this particular portion of Daniel Street is actually a city-owned street. Um, it has not been maintained in decades. Uh, now I've done countless hours and days of research, yes, as far as you have different types of maps, you have different... Each map is, is something that I even thought that might fall apart, you know, just to open it up, uh, but as it goes, you have Daniel Street, uh, it once fed into the old Daniel's lumber company. So that property has recently been purchased, uh, and that individual that purchased it and, uh, well, that group, they'll be coming up to speak next. However, one problem they're having is being able to access it for their future project. Now, one problem that, you know, I'm coming to y'all too, is to pretty much get permission to start setting out bids to clear Daniel Street and open it back up, since it is a city street. So since it is a city street, uh, it should be maintained and it's heavily overgrown, which means we currently do not have the capabilities or the equipment to open it back up. So, and it's the reason why we're needing to set out bids to get it open, cause this, you know, these trees are huge. Um, we got some trees through there that's clearly in the right way of, of the street, uh, at, you know, thirty-plus feet tall. And myself and Mr. Boatwright actually walked that property this evening, uh, after, you know, a quick tip that there's actually fire hydrants on that property, you know, along the street. Uh, but now act about losing what? About a pound of blood, uh, from mosquitoes. You know, we located them, uh, and Chief Cavanaugh, well, he has a decade. Uh, so they have recently, you know, a year or so flown those hydrants, and they actually flow well. Um, and I'm sure we can probably test them again, you know, next coming days.
Yeah.
If we're... Um, but from just visual inspection, you know, they look to be in good standard of shape. Might be some we don't have to replace.
So, um, Lucas Reed, as council, um, what we, what you're needing from council tonight is the approval for us to get, for you to get bids so you can get Daniel, the, the part of Daniel Street that is owned by?
The city.
The city of Darlington.
Yes, ma'am.
Offerable, a functioning asset.
Yes, ma'am. Um, and I even met with DOT earlier today, um, cause I couldn't find exact, you know, length of Daniel Street that the city owned. So they said here, this is how we calculate, you know, in wa- in all of our streets.
Right.
And hence why you have a printout of the tax map, and you see where, you know, it looks like that cross section. Um, that's why the red line represents, you know, what I measured out, you know, on the tax map, and the yellow line, you're directly above it, is what's showing on the tax map as being Daniel Street, you, which is recorded. Uh, that is approximately forty-one and a half feet long. Uh, DOT said when they mapped something out, they would go to the very end of that section, which is represented by a black line, and they mapped it out being a little over six hundred feet from the intersection of Brunson Street. Um, uh, we have, um, briefly spoken with the current residents, um, along Daniel Street. Uh, and I understand, you know, there'll end up having to be public hearings and everything. Once we get closer to those residents, their only grave concerns is there'd be a one lane, um, on ingress. You know, going out, going across the street, due to safety concerns, you know, high level of traffic, you know, going on across the street, you know, off of Daniels. Me personally, is I agree with them. You know, I don't see where there's, you know, one lane of traffic, you egressing out, shouldn't be an issue. Because I'm looking more at the bigger picture of, you know, potential new residents we're bringing in and revenue. That's just my perspective.
So, okay, you, but you have, um, considered, okay, um, I've walked the area.
Yes, ma'am.
I've, I've walked the area. Part of it, part of Daniel Street is, this is information you all got, because it is, um, owned by DOT.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, one block of it is, is, um, is from Edwards Avenue to Brunson Street is, is, um, DOT. From Brunson Street on into what would have been, what was the, where the Daniel Lumber Company is, is a, like a block. It is, um, it's all blocked up now. Folk are, because there's a barriers there, there was a big fence and things that stopped them from going in it further. Houses are long there, and they're using that as their driveway. So, but it is for the housing project to continue, we need to maintain that, to open it up.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just wanna make sure that you've talked with some of them owners and this and the other, but it is our responsibility. It's our street we just hadn't maintained and, you know. I was quite surprised to find out that we had water hydrants. I mean, the, they were on the property functioning.
So we're not, so...
No, I just wanted to clear you up, so...
So it's gonna sort of dead, it, it's not going all the way to Chalmers Street. This is only gonna, it's gonna stop sort of midway. It's not gonna carry on out to Jesamine or to Chalmers?
Yeah, so the, the one you're looking at is, uh, the yellow map. So, um, thi- this is, you know, the oldest map that I can locate, where it used to. However, when you look at, you know, the purple line, um, that's the only section that, you know, ever recorded as being actual, uh, city maintained.
So the rest of it, is that part also from Jesamine to that part of Daniels, is that gonna be DOT? Is that gonna be city?
No, no, ma'am. Um, so that one, uh, that map was just references what used to be back when the lumber company was there. Um, so if anything, that would be the developers', um, responsibility for that portion.
Okay.
Um, our main focus right now is to access, um, coming in off Brunson, on, you know, all through Daniel was recorded.
Good, just as our, just what we already know is ours is what you're wanting to clear.
Okay. And you're saying, what is ours is only forty-one and a half feet?
No, sir, that's, um, four hundred and twenty-one point five feet. Um, and that, that's just the, um, the yellow line there, um, which going to the midway point of that cross section.
This yellow line?
Yes. Um, that'll be that cross section. However, um, from everything that I could discover, um, that was already predetermined in old maps. You know, that cross section being, you know, proposed for future development way before any of us were, well, I don't say any of us. Some of our, some of us everyone, uh, was even considered, uh, to be in these positions. So, yes, that, that is my proposal, and, um, we have here Mr. Harry Cook and, um, CSC Properties, uh, they can elaborate a little more on their portion, but not overstepping, you know, jumping, um, jumping the gun per se, you know, for, you know, planning or future development. Um, just, you know, what they're gonna propose, just for informational purposes only.
I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, council, good to see you. My thanks, little Steve. If you have to begin there. Can I put something on, can he hook something up? Let me show you a little something in just a second, and I don't care if we do that. First off, the whole thing about a new development, that's a little skewed. This isn't a new development. What we need is the road open so we can use what's there. There's already water in there. Daniel Street used to go all the way through, and what we wanted was the workforce housing. It's funny, that workforce term was used, is what we're fixing to show you is workforce housing. Where you're editing a ten, eight or even a ten on the front, depending upon if we leave access from Jesamine to Ty and the Bays. If we do that, we're willing to give a lot up to get back to that Daniel Street. But if we have to put the infrastructure in, the funds just, it just doesn't, it doesn't work. The cost is too great. I, I, you know, it'd be, it'd have to be a Marshall family deal where they come in and stick it, and we really don't want that. All we want is something that looks like this. But the key to this, access. This isn't a new development. It's an existing road that's there with water already on, and we, we really, we, we're about to have this. That's the whole thing we put just to show you. pushing to show you. And some of, that's what, that's going for Jesamine right there. That's our plan. And you see the green line coming in. And we can leave us, one of those units out to tie in straight back to there. That's the floor plans. They do have side entry doors as well as front doors. That's your elevations. That's what we're doing on Lee Street right now. That's something we've done in the past. This whole affordable housing thing is what we really good at. And we have some breakdowns of finances and I, I wish, can I show you all a piece of paper? You have time to look at this? Is that okay? I guess you can turn the lights back on. That's all I can do for you. So I guess you can set up a copy. This, this is the breakdown. We're gonna, these houses are gonna be sold, not finished. These, we don't want homeowners in the, with the water bills, sewer bills, trash. I got one for everybody. This is a breakdown of the cost of what we plan to sell for, who can afford them. Just, and I know we're a little bit ahead of our skis with this, but this all hinges on getting help with this road. We don't get this portion out, the whole thing dies because the, you, it's too, too expensive. Does that make sense? If we have to pay for all this, we'll just, we'll use Jesamine to do something else with rear. But that is our, those are our projections.
What do you need for the city to pay for just opening the street?
Get, get the road put back and functioning.
And do you need it to be a two-lane or a one-way road?
You know, I hate to say this, but two-lane is ideal. If, if y'all can sit down and say, we'll do one lane and help you get out to Jesamine somehow, we can sit down and make it work out faster than that. I'm perfectly willing to give up along Jesamine to tie into it. If, if we can, if we can get back there and do the other exercise, that's fine. But I might have to help to do that.
But if we make it a one-way street, you can, you can work with it?
I, I, I think we can. I, I, that was, that's new to me. It's first I've heard of the one-way street. Was just what he said. He said, took me a little off. You guys forgive me. That's first I've heard of that.
Which one? You talking about Daniel?
The one-way street, yes, ma'am.
The one-way, that would, you know, I, I overstepped myself with that one. That would be just right there where the existing residences are, uh, coming out. But now, once it passes that barricade, that simply, it would.
Would that make a problem for those that, I mean, coming out? That's all I.
It, it shouldn't.
You're talking about taking a two-lane street and funneling it in.
Well, it would still be accessible by two-lane, but it would, you know, slow individuals coming down. Because the right way in that area is actually thirty-two feet.
Is it wide enough?
Yes. Um.
But it's so close to them houses. There's no, no room for error. If somebody swivel right, they gonna take somebody's front porch out. It's so close to them, to the houses. Because I went out there and I walked and, and colds went out. Now I, I hate Sheila there. But colds went out. And Sheila suggested that it wouldn't be safe to be a two-way street.
Here's what I'll say. Here's what I'll say. If you say, okay, we'll get that road cut in.
Yeah.
To where it shows the four-hundred fifty feet in the sideways, that only leaves us a short, a short distance to get to Jesamine. I think we could probably make that work. So if, if, if y'all say, okay, we'll go from here to there, we're not gonna give you two-way traffic from the short portion of Daniels, but we'll do the rest, somehow, no, we'll make the, build that work out for sure. But the problem is I can't access Daniels because, and, and I, and, you know, people lived there forever and I'm gonna respect them. I sort of started going in there until, you know, my testament.
Well, that's about all we can do tonight is to give Lucas permission to go and get bids to open it back up because you're gonna have to go back through planning and everything.
And I'm not trying to overstep any of that, believe me. Because Mayor Morgan's been working with Sheila there. I just, we had, there's no sense doing any conceptual drawings or any renderings, but I'm showing you unless I know, A, it's going in there and, and B, we can. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
So we need a, a motion to approve, um.
They just have approval for purchase of four meters.
Figuring out where we left off last time, capital group of funds for four meters. Decided to keep Shugie on the shelf and basically what we're asking for is to be able to purchase the meters and the MXUs because we're entering our, uh, replacement phase. Where all, all the meters that were put in thirteen or eleven, I forget what it was, um, they're reaching into their life. And they're starting to go, they're starting to go blank. And we want to keep the meters on the shelf to replace those as they go out. Using capital proof, which is, uh, from what I understand, I might, I may be wrong, is what, what the capital proof was, uh, intended for meter replacement.
Two of both of these pieces.
Yeah. What are these two different bids?
Uh, that, one of them is for meters. One of them is for MXUs. Uh, the MXUs is, is the radio that talks to the towers, sends the reading in.
Same bid, same contract.
So it's a handwritten numbers or the dollar amount?
Yes, yes. Um, I didn't want to use the, the quantity of the, of the quote, so I just soaked that in there. These, these are sole source. This one, these don't have to be advised.
So Jonathan, I want to say I appreciate you coming forth before us. Um, we've been seeing a lot of you lately. And, um, you know, I thought our, I have to say, you know, honestly, I thought our director was Charles Shugard. And you were limited to the questions that you could answer because you don't have the, that knowledge. And you, you came before us with, during the budget season, you've been back to us with different requests, but you are limited in, in, in your knowledge and of, of the budget and what.
Yes, ma'am.
And where these funds are. There are questions that you can't answer. And I'm, and no disrespect because I certainly appreciate you coming. But I need to hear from Mr. Shugard to answer some questions before I can continue with it in my, for me. I'm not comfortable going forward until I can hear from him with some of these things. Because I know before he came to us and he said that he was buying parts and said that they had parts. So I need a little clarity because you weren't privy to that. But he came before us months ago, the last time he was here, which was probably like April, and said that he was buying parts. And so I'm a little confused as to what this is. And then last month, you had to ask for some money for something. I, so I, I need, I just need to clarify. I mean, we're spending money and quite a bit of money. And I just need to know exactly where these funds are going and how this is gonna be used in the whole, in the grand scheme of things. Because the budget is tight and I just don't want to spend taxpayer money friskily. I need to make certain that we're doing this in the right order and get a, a clear direction on where we're going.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I, that's me. And if we're going, I'm one vote, somebody else may feel differently, but I just.
Just so I'm clear, so you were not comfortable sending, sending seven grand? About ten minutes ago, you worked up to spending fifty?
Well, that was for fire, oh, but the fire, that the fire chief said that he needed and we had to have. What I'm saying is last month, they came to us for eighty-some odd thousand dollars, I think it was. And then Mr. Shugard came to us before and said he was buying parts, little by little. So we're getting lots of mixed information and a constant need of money. I want to know what direction we're headed in and where this is going because we're spending out money, but we're not getting clarity. Because poor Jonathan here doesn't have information, bless his heart. He's doing the best he can. He doesn't have, when we're asking questions, he says he doesn't know. That's a, I guess you could say above his pay grade. But, so, I, I mean, I need the questions asked. That's all. That's, that's me.
The purpose of these, the meters, the meters are.
Exactly the same concern for fifty grand.
The purpose of these two parts are for the meters that are not being read, are not able to be read.
It's a difference. They're telling you that the, the director is never here. You were just saying.
Oh, no, we all.
That's, that's the difference. You did not make that clear.
We know why the director isn't here.
Oh, I know.
My, my understanding is, is that we can't not attack the director. And so we found a person that we can all get along with more. Let's be clear.
Oh, stop.
I ask questions. I ask everybody questions. It's not my fault you don't want to answer and then tell the truth.
It's just how we go about.
I ask everybody questions.
Well, I, 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 I was not.
That y'all want to have everything one way.
Oh, no, ma'am.
That's why we ask questions.
Now, allow me to say this, this bit. If you, if you are a director and in a managing position, you need to know how to manage and handle people. You won't get along with everyone that you work with. In no position that, that any of us have ever worked, have you gotten along with everyone. And if your way of dealing with conflict is to avoid it, then maybe management isn't the position you need. We need to be here. The directors and the, need to come to answer questions. Jonathan, unfortunately, doesn't have all the information and can't answer the question. We were told something totally different months ago when the la, when the director was here. Because he told us back then, he was already buying parts and this, that, and the third. But now we're getting information where I'm saying is contradictory to what he previously said. That's why I'm questioning this. And I, I just want, I just want to speak to him and, and him to come explaining this because I'm just seeing money being requested and some things are different than what we were previously told. I just want some clarity. But he needs, but any manager, not just him, any manager, needs to be able to manage and learn how to deal with various personalities. That's all. And if you can't do that, and if you're not able to do that, like I said, management might not be for you. Well, we deserve and have a right as a governing body to hear from the people that we put in these positions. That's all. And to be able to get a clear explanation. I want clarity. I'm not saying I wouldn't do it. I just need clarity.
I don't think that it's a, that's just totally different than how I see the situation. I see the situation as if a council member, let's just use me for example, attacks another council member or a city employee, that's not a working relationship. That is, um, has legal term to it. And so that's the difference that I see in this situation. Not that he doesn't have the ability.
Arrested and bullying is one of them.
Yeah. Not that he doesn't have the ability to, um, communicate with, um, differing personalities. It's the ability to be able to sustain, uh, sustain personal attacks constantly and just trying to keep him out of an environment so we don't find ourselves in another lawsuit.
Well, can he, they have come to us and say, but they is, you knew that. You knew why he wasn't here. I wasn't privy to that information.
Listen, I mean.
I wasn't. You saying no, but I mean, I wasn't privy to that. He just hasn't been shown up. And we have questions.
All right. Do y'all want to vote on this?
He wasn't here because they in good old boy system and they want to hide. That's what it's all about. No, you just, you just tried to attack me.
I never mentioned.
You just tried to attack me.
I would like to ask.
You just tried to attack me. That's why you got sued. You tried to attack.
Cancel.
I never got sued.
Cancel.
You tried to attack.
Cancel.
Scott, and I don't care about your yell, but you tried to attack me too. You stop.
Okay.
You stop.
You can act that way.
Because you not gonna attack me either.
I'll make a motion to go.
That's why you got sued. So y'all the one who tried to take it through all that dirt behind closed doors. That's why you threw away several hundred thousand dollars on, on one fifty-one. You got a splash pad, the cave didn't open. Because you didn't follow the law. And now D. Heck want you another sixty or seventy thousand dollars on a splash pad you can't open. Because you can't follow the law. Because you can't follow the law.
Cancel. You're out of line.
You out of line. That's why that splash pad didn't get open.
Let's, let's the red.
All right.
Now let's tell the truth. Let's tell the whole truth. Y'all the one who tried to attack.
And, uh.
Y'all the one trying to attack.
I'll make a motion that we carry this matter over. Just tape it. Thank you. I already taped it. Uh, approval of qualification board, street back.
Oh, you want me to go, okay?
Yes.
Um, hopefully you have these two sheets of paper. Okay, so each, she can speak a little more on this, but each year, the application board typically has, uh, one major project that they do.
Two blocks claim.
And they, um.
She just called me.
I'm sorry, but can you?
I didn't call you anything. I didn't call you anything.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I didn't call you anything.
City council.
I'll second that.
Mr. Seeger.
I didn't call you one thing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Go on, second and third. Mr. Ben. I'll take it. Second, number.
Go ahead. You, you can, uh, there's not, we didn't, did everybody else vote?
I'm not voting for you. I'm gone. Just for a sound.
Oh, okay.
So they have no reflection on y'all's project. I do apologize for leaving in the middle of it. I'm just, I'm gonna stand here and listen to people in our citizens who are working so hard for our community get attacked by walking to a microphone and called the Clue Bloods claim.
Are you serious?
I'm one hundred percent. We have to learn as a, we as a community have to learn how to communicate, even if we don't like each other. Be a better person. You are a legitimate official.
Years on the page. What are you talking about?
Uh, so these banners, we want to put sixteen of them around the square area. Um, these banners would, there would be two different designs. One of them would be a holiday, uh, design. And then another one would have the city logo and some kind of design with that city logo. Uh, so they do have this money. Uh, this is in their budget. I think they have seven thousand dollars. Uh, this would be roughly thirty-five hundred, depending on what size we choose. Uh, not me, but the board chooses.
They will put the flags where?
On the little light poles. They're already facing on the square. You know, the lights. And that way we don't have to worry.
We already have the brackets up there.
No, we don't. The brackets we purchase, we purchase.
So these are the size poles we would choose. We're looking at the bigger banners. I feel like if you're around your town, you ought to be able to see what's on the banners. So it's a two foot by four foot. So it'll be the second one over. And we would put them on our small light poles around the square. And then also two on Pearl Street going to the square, two on Main Street going to the square, and two on Cashwell Street coming up to the square. So when you approach the square, you'd be able to see the banner. And then they would go all the way around with the banners.
Because those are the only ones that have this type of pole.
Right.
They're not the big light poles that are on the square. They're the small, it's like twelve-foot poles.
The black poles.
The black poles that look, yeah, that sort of look like the one on this picture right here. They look like the poles we got on, on here. They're about this size. And we already got it.
Yeah. So for sixteen, um, Darlington, welcome to Darlington banners, sixteen holiday banners, and the, um, brackets would be about thirty-eight hundred dollars.
What's the design?
That is not, to be chosen yet. Hunter will work with the company and they will send us like five different samples of the city logo, five different samples of the holiday season. And then they can come before council. Y'all can look at that.
Pizza wine.
So I think we need approval just to move forward.
And we would like to have this done before the end of November so we can put the holiday ones up. And it is a three-week turnaround plus shipping. So that's about a week. So we're looking at a month. Once we get the design nailed down. So that's why we're just kind of in a hurry to get this done. We would like them up for the Christmas season.
Yeah. And we don't need any money because Charlie gave us.
We've already got our own.
You just need a nod.
We just need a, a nod of approval that said it's okay to put banners or put your banners if it's, if it's okay.
I think it was requested from council that they bring this to you. I don't know if it always was that way or not, but.
Right.
For being willing to work on it.
Hey, we're excited about it. I think they're gonna look really good.
So when you get the design, you're gonna write it back to us legally, right?
Right, right.
I believe so.
Well, I say this, I mean.
When I saw it, it was all good.
They're cute.
These are all kinds of things that are, you know, make a track.
And they, they, these ones have a, um, three-year warranty. They're made out of a Main Street fabric. They will not fade. They're digitally printed so they can put any kind of logo on them without, you know, there's not a restriction on that. The brackets will be for all of the different banners. Next year, we do hope to purchase a spring and fall banner. So we'll have each season up there. And I think they'll just look really good for our town. And they'll all have like a little, the logo on, the city logo.
Are there any of these poles like out near the Walmart at the intersection of, of Governor Williams that we could put this pole up?
We don't have that much money yet.
No, I'm saying, is there a pole already out there when?
Not like those decorative ones. These are the lamp poles.
These are the lamp ones, not the really tall, big energy ones.
So twelve feet, maybe twelve feet tall.
Yeah, but there's not anything-
No, there's nothing out there.
I mean, that can be a project, that could be a project for next year, but this is gonna take up the ma, the majority of our budget. We still, still do have to pay for our spring and fall cleanup days and that takes about a thousand dollars each.
We've already fixed stuff, service. I, I, I pay for that process.
Guess we're receiving it as information until you come back with some designs for us to-
No, we just need the permission to go, go forward with it and contact the company to get the designs.
I will make a motion that you have permission to go forward with getting stuff for you back to us.
I'll second.
You might ask.
We were distinctively slow. We should come first.
It says council comments. I just, um, I would like to, I'm thank, I'm, I'm just so thankful that all of you do stay. You, you do stay regardless of, uh, the confrontations and things. But as a council member, I think I agree with other council members that any of these directors, they need to show, whether he presents or not, they need to be here. It doesn't, it, it, and we all have been, uh, attacked at one point and, and another. I'm not saying I'm sanctioning anybody's behavior, but as a council member, trying to sit up here and, and, and make the policies that will improve this city, keep us running. And one of the main things is our staff. We, we can't do it without, without them. And so in that case, that is why we, and, and, and because so much of our, so many of our residents have voiced their things about the water department and the, and the, and the problems that they're incurring because of that. We cannot ignore it, y'all. So that's, that's why we are asking that all of our department heads, when it is, at least be here. Just be here.
Yes.
And again, I, I do thank y'all for the love of all, all of you.
You're coming?
Okay.
Okay. Well, um, I'm with Mr. Lane. Thank you for staying. I also, um, just wanna express, um, as a governing body, as a whole, I wanna make, I'm trying to make every effort to make certain that, um, we are working together. Whether we like each other, I think that has to be something that we all commit to. There is a civility, um, act that was signed and was posted on the door that was signed prior to my coming to council where the governing body said that they agreed to work together. Um, and it is important that whether we agree or disagree, that we work and we stay to do the work until it is completed. Regardless of personal feelings, we have to stay and do the course. Because we are not here for ourselves. It's not just about me and my three. It's about the citizens of our city. The six thousand plus citizens that elected us to govern their city and to look out for their best interest. And in order to do that, we have to put aside personal issues and work towards making the city better by whatever means it takes. And sometimes that might require biting our tongue or whatever. But we need to make certain that we are working together and that we stay to do the work that's required. I am glad that we have council comments again. I do wanna see and hear going forward, a monthly report from all of our committees. Um, whether it's historic, beautification, planning, all of them need to come to us and let us know what's going on. Uh, our department heads need to come and let us know what's going on. Because I understand their situations. They may not be able to be present at every meeting. But when you are presenting items and requesting funds, we need to hear from you. We need you here to answer those questions. If you're not on vacation or the like, then we need you to be able to answer questions, especially when you're requesting large funds. Just so we can get the necessary questions. Taxpayers, I think, expect us to work for them and to spend their funds wisely. And we are, we have the weight of the city on our shoulders and have to work with the budget that we have. And we can't just spend money frivolously. Because basically when a, the citizen isn't gonna come and talk to the water department director when they have a problem. Or the next citizen, they're gonna end up coming to each one of us. We're gonna get the phone call about, well, why did you do this? And I need to have an answer. So I'm not here to incite anything. I was simply making a statement. If some feathers got ruffled, then I hate that happen. But there is protocol that needs to be followed and we need to be able to get the necessary questions addressed, uh, in the, in the right manner. So I'd like to see going forward, our committees and our department heads here, um, at a council meeting so that they can give us their report and keep us in the loop. Transparency, um, is very important and as well as open communication. Thank you for your time.
So I make a motion that we go into executive session.
No campaign speech tonight. Thank you for stating and writing. Sometimes I book in Bronco.
Again, I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Executive session in accordance to code, SC code three zero dash four dash seventy, which allows us, uh, for a closed meeting for discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee or the appointment of a per, person to a public body.
Okay.